When you change subjects today, you're going to go slow so we can shuffle the paper and find everything.
Me too.
Yeah, one thing I found too, being on the phone, is that when people shuffle, you know, when you're...
You can hear it?
Oh, my goodness, yeah. It's hard to hear that.
I was talking to the gal, Rick Ryelinski, today on that DRI, and I was eating potato chips. She said, "What's that noise? I never thought about it."
That's too funny.
Two-minute warning.
Yeah, Tyler sent that to me the other day, and I just sort of scanned it real quick.
Which one?
The DRI for Gartner.
Two-minute warning.
Like I said, it's the flip of what Jeff indicated.
Newspaper called me this morning.
Do they have local residents?
I don't know. I named Bill Smith. I don't know if he's here. With news press, I called him back and told him what I had found out, that it was basically a false alarm, no big issue. Or at least what I believe to be no big issue.
The conversion, yeah. Again, it's one of those things you need to look at. Initially, it's okay, but you never know.
I don't know next year if we get 10,000 residents, which means a gateway again.
Well, you know, it's interesting, depending upon how commercial or, you know, the trip generation rates, you know, is it more staggered than originally? I mean, typical single-family home is 10 trucks a day. Typical apartment, you know, six and a half or so, something like that. Then you go like five ALFs or like one, you know.
And so business is running free.
Yeah, so it's interesting. You don't know. No, they have peak times, that's not my problem.
That's peak times.
Hell, like churches, you know, the great neighbors except on Sundays or weeknights.
Okay, it's 3 o'clock. I'll go ahead and call the meeting order. If you have a phone, please turn it to silent for the rest of the meeting. We'd appreciate that, and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If anybody does want to speak to the board today, there's forms at the over where you sign in by the door to fill out, and you give them to this gentleman here. Raise your hand. Do we have any?
Yes, we do. Richard Macia? Macia. Bocce courts.
Yes, I spoke to you last meeting about bocce courts. I have a lot more information for you on this. The area I was thinking of is entering the Gateway Park area on the right. There's plenty of room for bocce courts. I've spoken to several people in my community and also throughout the community. There's a lot of interest in playing bocce. You have thousands of people here, and you're going to derive a lot of people that would want to play there. So my suggestion is, don't build just one, build several, at least four over there. If you're going to have the material there to build one, you should have the material there just the kind you want. Cheapest way to do it, I think, is you get your railroad ties, build a court, put cement down, level it, and put artificial turf on it. No maintenance.
And that's what we actually have at Stony Brook. We have two courts in Stony Brook. And I did sit down with April after last week's meeting, because she and I are working on just a plan, a potential phase plan for parks and recs enhancement. So we were trying to see, you know, at what point do we, you know, from a planning perspective, when is, how that would, how the bocce courts would fit into the larger plan? Is there an opportunity for short-term versus long-term? So there has been discussion on it, and if you've got information to leave with that, that's great.
I have more information.
But I want you to know, we haven't forgotten about it.
That's okay.
It's just part of a, it is part of a bigger conversation, but it doesn't mean that it will, you know, it'll take forever for us to take action on that. So April, would you add anything to that?
No, other than it probably is going to be part of the larger capital planning process that will implement, we likely discussed comprehensively during the 2018 budget preparation.
Okay, thank you very much. Do you have a cost estimate per court?
I could give you all this over here. I'm not too sure about just laying a slab down with the concrete, how much that would cost. It can't be that much, but I have a lot more information for you guys to look over.
And obviously, you're going to have to add lighting to that.
Don't need lighting, only be daytime.
Only daytime?
Only daytime. That's the only plan. I'll just give you this one for instance. Every retirement community, this is the first thing they show.
Yeah. Look at bocce courts. Which one's that?
This is...
Grandesa?
Dominique.
I'll leave you with this information. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Y'all have a good afternoon.
You too.
Next up is Dolores Lynn Scott. She'd like to talk about the lakes.
Hi, everybody. Dolores Lynn Scott Walden Lakes. I came to ask if you could give me some idea when you're going to start on our lakes, but I see there's a couple of things on here about the loan. Is that the loan for the lakes? So that still hasn't been approved, or you will do it tonight, maybe?
I believe we're waiting to hear from the state. Is that, am I right or am I wrong?
I believe there is approval on the agenda.
Yeah, we're ready to go. We have to make a decision to what we're going to do based on the bids. That's it. I think the line of credit is pretty well established, and the ultimate loan is established, and the bond validation is moving on.
So do you have the contractor already to go if you get the loan?
We have bids. We have bids to be discussed. Yeah, we have bidders for each of the first...
So you think it might be this month yet?
I don't, I can't speak for the other five, but if we accept the bids and proceed with what we've got, there's no reason why it can't be done starting maybe the first week in March.
And you'll get us done before the rain starts then, probably, huh?
That's the desire.
I tell you, we're losing our yards pretty fast. One more thing, if you go to the Girl Scout building, which I'm hoping you will, could you build the desks down so your computers will be down in front of you so you can, we can see your faces?
This is ridiculous.
And get a better sound system in, too. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Duly noted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dolores.
Next up is Carrie Minor, also wants to talk about Lake...
Carrie Minor?
I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's okay. I won't go into all of them.
I live on Vinicius Drive on the north side, so on the other side of the lake from where she is. And just was basically asking the same question as to the starting date for that. Also, if that is approved, is that lake the first one that's going to be done? Because we've been told that that was it. There's a long history with it, goes back years. I mean, Scott, if anybody here today, when I was working for you, came out a few years ago, looked at it, said it was going to be started in September, and that was at least two or three years ago. Engineers came out a year and a half ago and said there that it was, oh, January was too wet, and oh, it's getting to the rainy season, which is going to happen again. Oh, well, then we can do it even though it's a rainy season, because we can lower the lake. Basically, it's been kind of almost a comedy. If it was funny, it isn't. I'd like to hopefully be told at some point by you guys that that is the next lake, if that is approved, and it'll be done before my pool is part of the lake, which may sound funny, but it's getting close. There are...
We've taken bids on five lakes. The first five lakes are 86, 87, 116, 118, 126, where you have them.
126.
And the issue is, is that we have to make a decision of what we're going to do relative to the bids we received. The bids were high. The bids were high. So we've got to make a decision once we do.
They're not going to get any lower.
I'm sorry.
It's not going to get any cheaper to do, and not only just the money part of it, but the fact that if it keeps on going like it is, it's going to be more expensive. Just, there's going to be more to do. I mean, there are areas, if you walked along behind my house, and my neighbor's houses also, where when you step down, you sink in, because there is no ground underneath the grass. It's basically a layer of sod sitting there on top of, which is dangerous. The lawn people can't mow on it very effectively, because they, you know, the mowers sink in. And, you know, we're looking at a, you know, somebody walking along that lake that gets hurt, a possible lawsuit, along with some of the things that have been done before, like those drain pipes or whatever they are that go out there, which were a complete waste, as far as I've heard, and I can see...
What was a complete waste?
Drain pipes on the...
I don't know if they're drain pipes or what, they're kind of hoses that go out into the lake, which supposedly were supposed to, I guess, drain the water.
The roof drains, Bill.
Drain the water and keep it from going out there. What they did was create a more dangerous situation, because there's a hump there now as well, so somebody's walking along, didn't see it. Again, they could trip and easily turn an ankle on that. So there's a lot of those things that have been done that are making more dangerous. But the fact that if you do wait, it's not going to get any less expensive, it's going to get more, and there's going to be more that needs to be done. So, please.
We're trying to get it done as quickly as we can.
We were told this year that it was always going to be done, started by February, the latest March. And that was the last, last board meeting I was at, that's what I was told.
If it was, if we could have it the way we want it, it would be all done by now, okay?
I just want to know, I just want to know that it's going to get done, and of course, selfishly, mine is going to get done, but...
We lost the magic wand.
Well, you'll find it again, Ed, come on.
Last up is Flavia Losch.
Okay, so I just wanted to talk a little bit more about just the fountain in the lake on 83. I was able to print out, and I actually just was able to give this to Elle, the fountain that, it was suggested originally that was hit by lightning. And then I'll just pass it on that, you guys can keep it. As you can see, those pictures were taken the day after the fountain was pulled off to the pond, and you can see there is only one part with the nozzle that is melted. Everything else is intact, no damage, missing motor and pump. As you can see, it's actually, but to see on the pond itself, the algae that's there and the algae that it is on the intake of that fountain. Like I said, I did provide Elle with Aquagenics reports a couple of weeks ago. I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at it or not. I also went back and I printed the pictures since when the fountain was installed. That brand-new fountain was ordered in December 2014, installed January 2015. Those are the pictures of the algae and the, that was on my pond during that time, which I consider extremely excessive, so... So in saying that, I would like to ask the district to replace that pond, replace that fountain, that new fountain that we had.
April, why these are going around, is my understanding, talking to Elle, that we're negotiating a deal right now to be able to separate the electrical to the two, the one that's on ours and the one that's on theirs.
Yes.
I hadn't heard anything about, are we talking about repair of a fountain, or are we...
No, this will be, this will be the replacement of a fountain, the one that's, there's a motor missing and the pump that's missing. Since, I truly, and I had vendors look into it and says, you know, this was not hit by lightning. And I mean, I do have the pictures. I do have the pictures showing the amount of algae that was on the pond during that time. I know Elle has taken pictures with the camera herself.
We're trying to equate the algae as being the issue for the breakdown of the area fountain.
Yeah, and I'm looking at the pictures plus the reports from Aquagenics, plus the picture of the actual fountain itself. The only thing that we don't have is the motor and the pump. And I did offer to Aquagenics, I mean, I'll dive in the lake and I'll go get it, I'm certified. I told them, just bring the boat, I'll gear up and go get it. Haven't heard from them, so in regards to that, I mean...
Do we have an estimate of what the cost is of the fountain replacement?
I have the invoice. It's around $5,500.
Fifty-five?
Yeah. I mean, if they can reuse the cables, it'll be a little bit less, and the cables, they were, I mean, I've finished it and had another vendor test it, they were fine. So originally, we paid for, well, we actually bought two new, it was $5,167 for that fountain.
Did we get a confirmation back, or did we do any investigative work from Aquagenics to verify what the reason of failure of that area or fountain was?
There was a conversation held with that, and I was, I was under the impression that the original interpretation was it was lightning and it wasn't caused by the algae. If there's a different conclusion, I'm not aware of that yet from Aquagenics.
And you're saying somebody said it was...
I had, I had three vendors look into it. I have one vendor that actually works in golf courses, and he says he sees lightning strikes in fountains very often. He says it didn't look like it. He says he'll make himself available to, you know, to you guys if you guys have any questions. And then I had two other vendors, the electricians, that came in and they said this is not. And I know, I can, I did not do the final research, but I know you can look at lightning strikes on a specific area. I mean, if that's something that I'm going to take the time, and if you guys want, I can research it, and I can just print up a map for the specific date and see if there's a lightning strike on that day, because it wasn't.
Is there an insurance coverage on these fountains for a lightning hit?
On, not for me.
The HOA didn't have an insurance policy?
Uh-uh.
Okay. I think the only thing we need to do is just verify that that is indeed the issue.
Yeah, and I'll have that conclusion. We're trying to bring the item back before the board for a vote on March 2nd. Is that our first working in March?
Second. And I had, I had inquired with Elle about this, because I wondered if the electric, the electrical portion had been done with FPL, and she also told me that they were working, that they were working on a package to bring forward.
Yeah, I'm waiting on that. That's okay. That's, yeah, they're working on it. I'm satisfied with the progress on that.
So I have it noted to resolve this issue as well, and try to be sure that we can, try to get it all wrapped up.
And the, and the aerators themselves are still functioning? All five of them, six of them?
I think JJ can answer to that, because he was there last week.
They're all working. They're all working. We're called out there that there was one not working, but you're outside, it was working.
What are we doing about the algae?
Treating it.
Well, we've currently done one of three treatments, I believe.
Yes, we started this, the second round. As you know, that lake...
Madam Chairman, sir, you may want to approach the podium and give your name and address for the record, please. And also, Madam Chairman, I'll give this to April, so she can include these as part of the record.
My name's JJ. I'm with Branch Manager at Aquagenics here at Fort Myers. Lake 83 is kind of our special case as far as lakes out here go with algae. It's been treated at least three, four more times than any other lake for algae. So unfortunately, when you treat algae, it's kind of a, you kind of are reacting and not being proactive, and that's the nature of algae. But for some reason, this lake produces a lot of algae from the bottom. We've had our suppliers expert out here, C Pro, and they've analyzed the algae and taken samples, and he has put us on a prescription for two separate types of treatment. And we actually built a hose unit specifically for this pond, which we drag behind the boat, and it sprays on the bottom of the lake. So we did that recently, and we're doing that with this treatment. But based on kind of addressing what she was speaking about with the lightning, as you can see on those pictures, that nozzle was completely blown apart, and you can't tell by the pictures, but the actual brackets that hold the fountain in, the motor and the pump, are actually bent down. So something somehow blew that motor from above, you know, to the, basically, bottom of the lake. And we do dozens upon dozens of pumps and motors, and the only time we've ever seen anything like that is in a lightning situation. A motor by itself will not just melt and blow up. It doesn't happen that way. It's got breakers and everything else behind it. So there's nothing in the motor that actually explode and cause that type of damage. We've done, we did the aeration, which was provided. We recommended aeration, that was done on Lake 83, so we feel like that's improved the lake some. It hasn't gotten it to where we want to be, so we continue treating it. Again, this is a special case. We've basically thrown everything we can at it that we have available, our resources. We have also recommended some treatments that were not approved by management based on the price, the pricing, and how affordable or unaffordable it is. So as far as, we're doing everything under our power right now to treat Lake 83 and to get it to where we want it to be. We do not argue that some of the issues with the other lakes, we actually provided a new motor and pump already at our cost, basically to fix one motor that was essentially caused by the algae, was ruined by the algae, and the constant clogging of it, having to go clean it and replace that, so. The middle fountain actually had the same issue. We have that pulled, and we have that with the manufacturer for warranty right now, looking at it, so.
Now, I'd heard one of the things that we were looking at is putting in some type of, like a bacteria?
Yes. We have a product called Muckaway, which is proven. They have lots of different studies behind it, and George right now is putting together a package to kind of show the science and results with that. And it's essentially a real heavy pellet bacteria. It's thrown in the lake, it goes straight to the bottom, and it eats, it's called, in some cases, they've recorded like four to five inches of sludge being removed from the bottom of lakes in one year.
But we haven't done that yet?
No. We have recommended that, I think a few years back, we recommended it, and the cost was around, to you guys, was around $24,000. And the product has gotten a little cheaper, so George is working on another proposal, and together with some information on the product.
Is there, so we're treating the problem now, and I understand that there's, just the way that that lake is constructed, that it's just, it's susceptible to algae.
No flow-through. It's no water.
We've eliminated any, there's no, there's nothing, there's no issues with anything entering the lake that shouldn't be there causing it. Again, you have the lake to the south of there, you know, quarter mile to the south, and that's one of the nicest lakes as far as not needing treatment, no algae. And then just, just north of that, you have this lake which has all the problems, so you can't...
So at some point, we, you know, we're going to continue throwing money at this lake until we come up with a solution.
We think it's, the bottom is, it's a deep lake in the center. We've done the mapping, and we've mapped the lake. It's relatively deep for this area. So we think maybe it's just some limestone down there, you know, that has all the nutrients and everything on the limestone, and the stuff's just growing right on the limestone, so. And again, that's why we had the C Pro expert out to identify specifically what type of algae it is, and to treat just that specific algae, to get it to, to see if we can get it to come up and...
If you go through these treatments, is it just a short-term elimination, and there's a probability that we'll be addressing this again in the future?
Normally, when you're treating with a chelated copper product, which is what we usually treat with for algae on other lakes, that's all you're doing, is you're, you're making algae sink to the bottom, you're getting rid of the problem. And again, as the nutrients and the level change, the phosphates and nitrates, you know, that, that kind of can go up and down, so that solve your issue if you get rid of those problems. But the bacteria and some of the other things we propose is essentially getting rid of the source, would be getting rid of the source.
So that you can identify the root calls and...
For the second straight month, our monthly tests, and once again, they're a snapshot of when we're there.
Right.
Have we exceeded nitrates and nitrites?
Yeah.
Second straight?
Yeah, and even, those tests are a little high, but it doesn't, there's no red flag that we've seen through water testing that says, "Ah, ha, this is the problem."
Yeah.
We haven't seen that.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just, I just have to guess some more thing on the fountain, and that would be done.
So as, so as, since July of this year, the other two fountains that were, they're there, they have not been working. So I have been patiently, and my residents have, I want to turn the fountains back on. And if I do that, and if there's still algae, they're going to get clogged, and most likely, we're going to lose two other fountains. So I'm hereby putting the board a notice, if you don't treat that algae, those fountains are going to be turned back on, because I was kind enough, and I think from over six months to having no fountains on those lakes, on that lake, it's fair. So the fountains are going to go back on. If the algae's not treated, they're going to get clogged, and there's two other brand-new fountains. And I mean, those fountains, they were all, one was purchased last year, the other two were purchased at the same time, so, brand-new fountains. That's it. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Flavia.
Anyone else, Stephen?
No, that's it.
Okay. Then we'll move on to staff reports. District Council.
If I may, and Madam Chairman, if we could, if this is an add-on or walk-on, and you may want to ask members of the public if they wish to comment on this, then give an opportunity to speak. It's a memorandum I provided February 14th with regards to suggested changes to the landscape, sign drainage utilities, and street lighting maintenance, and hold harmless interlocal agreement. That's the agreement that was hashed out for a couple of years and was approved almost three years ago, and for the road turnover of the roads to Lee County. I don't know if all board members have a copy of the memo?
Yeah, try to see what it looks like.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought, emailed it out, and I thought everyone had had it.
Pass it down.
And the, last week, it was revised by the Assistant County Attorney, John Fredima, who's handling this matter, that the item, item is scheduled for February 21st, Lee County, Board of County Commissioners meeting consideration of, yeah, you can take all those.
Yes.
Of this, as well as the accepting the turnover of the WCI roads. I know there's some question as to whether or not they would be included. And the Lee County staff, in finalizing their review, asked that additional language be added to paragraph eight. And as I went through, I've also caught one other little item, or two items. One, changing the date to 2017, and it still needs to be changed on the end. Adding language with regards to clarifying that Lee County will be the owner of the sidewalks within the roadway, which we, I believe was clear, but just to make sure it's extra clear...
The inference was there, but it didn't say.
Yes, wanted to make sure. And that paragraph eight, excuse me, paragraph five, additional language added at the end with regards to the operation in, of certain drainage facilities, to make sure that it's understood that the drainage systems, the road collection system, and Mr. Tinkler, or Tyler may correct me, or Chris, that the, that portion, the catch basins and the pipe within the roadway that takes the runoff from the right-of-way, is the responsibility, will be the responsibility of Lee County, and the district would be responsible for maintaining the stormwater management, surface water management system in which that water flows.
Downstream.
Downstream. And so this language on paragraph five was requested by the county. Your staff and consultants believe it's appropriate. And Mr. Cecil is here. I want to thank him for pushing it along, nudging it along. He has a couple of big-sized shoes that can leave impressions on parts of ones posterior if items are not moving well enough along. I think he has a direct hotline to John Fredima in the county attorney's office also. But I appreciate all he, and I think the district and community appreciate all he has done to move this along. So it's currently scheduled for November, February 21st before the county commission. What I would do is, again, ask the chair to, ask if any members of the public want to comment on these proposed changes, and then the action item is requested that the board authorize the chairman to sign, once it's approved by the county commission, this revised interlocal agreement, once we get all the other documents lined up for the transaction. And on the conveyance documents, the county is comfortable with the title commitment that we provided. They want us to combine it, and that's easy to do. Their, the form of the deed, the affidavit, they're fine. We just need to update some items, like the affidavits and surveys. And I appreciate the effort that the county has put into this also.
Does anybody have anything they wanted to comment on this item? Didn't see any.
No.
So...
Motion for the chairman to...
Execute the revised interlocal agreement. And then, and if the board wants anyone to attend next week's board meeting, I'm not, you may want to just be there to answer any questions if any are asked.
Motion to allow you to sign off on this document as revised by council.
Have a second?
Thank you.
And Kathy, you have a comment?
I have a question, because I know all this was done before me. On number seven, okay, it says the county can, and without giving us any notice, do things, and I find that a little upsetting, because I know if they start doing something, residents will get upset, at least if we knew out of courtesy telling us what they were doing. And I'm just wondering why it says without notice.
Well, this is a product of all those negotiations, because they may at times have to take emergency measures or steps. And my dealings with the county, and I think also the fact that you have a county commissioner residing within your community, I think there'll be plenty of notice. There's been good rapport established between the county staff and the district staff in the district over the last few years. So I'm comfortable leaving that in there.
Okay, I just was mostly curious why it said without notice figuring that. I know residents see things going on and call.
Yeah, and I think the qualifier there is to advance, preserve, or protect the public health, safety, and welfare. And that's sort of the, they can't waive their emergency authority, and that preserves that. But again, the way they, we have interacted with Alaska peers, I'm comfortable that they will continue to keep the county, the district apprised. They don't want.
This is the important part.
Any of their bosses to get phone calls.
And it is their road.
Yes.
Yeah.
Or will be.
Or will be.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Motion here.
Thank you. One item that's not on the agenda, and it's not an action item, and Tyler brought it to my attention early this week, with regards to a DRI, notice of proposed change by the folks owning the Gartner Building. The, my brief review of it indicates that what they're trying to, what they will be asking for is to allow a conversion of some of the resident, unused residential density to be converted to the commercial institutional industrial utilization. And they're saying there's no net traffic impact. And again, that's just in their submittal, and we'll monitor that, and if it becomes necessary for a recommendation for staff to get more involved, we will come back before the board and keep you all apprised.
Yeah, follow-up on that one, Margaret. It's difficult reading that, because the inference is they're taking out two hundred and eighty-five, and that we're losing two eighty-five. What they really don't say unless you really get into the fine print is, is that Gateway was established, I believe, with ten thousand residential units, and we couldn't build ten thousand if we stacked them on top of each other. So it's taken two eighty-five off of a number we couldn't achieve anyway. And it doesn't really make that clear, but I'm convinced now, after talking to the Homontas people that are representing them, all this is a paper chase.
Madam Chair, first, may I?
Yes.
Mr. Attorney, am I correct that the new construction in the Gartner Building, when it's finished, will be paying additional taxes to this district as well as Lee County?
Lee County they will, as far as assessments, once again, whatever the assessments level, we don't value, do it based upon value, but to Lee County, yes, they enhance value, if they have enhanced property values, you'll have additional tax revenues.
We get water sewer.
Oh, revenues, that's correct, I'm sorry, revenue net, yeah. And again, it's just, right now, and again, it's just, I think in the past, WCI had asked that there be the ability to convert the commercial to residential, and this is going back the other way in one respect also.
What's more ERUs, our ERU count, which was at sixty-eight hundred or something like that, is going to go up? With whatever the, whatever the, what is the formula, one ERU per ten thousand square feet or something like that?
For which section?
Oh, for utilities, yeah, it is.
Oh, yeah, yeah, for utilities, yeah.
Yeah, for ten thousand. And one other item too, that we had some recent developments on, Mr. Tinkell and Tyler were involved in Timber Creek. So we'll be bringing, at some point in time, we'll come back before the board on that because of the water management issues, to get some further direction. We already have some direction, but we may need further direction.
What was that last comment, please?
Oh, we've had, we have further direction to write a letter to South Florida, but after some other recent conversations and meetings with the applicant for Timber Creek, following the water management aspect, we may be coming back for further direction. And also, they are, they will be in the process of, and have submitted to Lee County for rezoning of that too, so there may be a couple opportunities to have the district involved to ensure the district's interests are protected. Timber Creek is a product right next door, the five hundred some odd acres.
Did you have anything else?
Nothing further, until we get to the items.
Okay. District engineer.
Hello.
Hello.
So my name is Tyler Wainwright, I'm with Tetra Tech, so I'll be your district engineer for this afternoon. The bulk of everything that I'm probably going to talk about is handled under the business items here a little bit later, so I suppose all the late conversation, all of that, we can have at that point in time. But to give you guys a couple of updates, we did receive some plan submittals since our last meeting for a couple of new developments. One is for Gartner, that we just talked about, and the other one is for the Skinny Dogs Restaurant over there in the Fairway Lakes Office Park. So we've got those two that we'll be reviewing, if anybody would like to get a copy of the plans, look at them, put your input, I can definitely handle that. Also, with the roadway conveyance that Tony was speaking of, so next Tuesday is hopefully the day when those roads get conveyed to the county. Just to give you all a heads up, after that happens, there's going to be some additional paperwork that we'll have to take care of to transfer the South Florida permits that are associated with that drainage of the roadways. So because we are conveying that drainage infrastructure to the county, no longer gateways, we need to also convey those permits, or a portion of those permits for the infrastructure as well. So just to kind of clean up some paperwork on that. So once that happens, hopefully, we'll, we'll follow up with that as well.
Tyler, on that, do we have to give them a map to show them what we're talking about? Because, you know, those are just pieces of storm sewer network that full length. How do you, how do you describe what we're giving them?
See, that's going to be the, the challenge that we'll have to deal with, is, like you're saying, they're, they're basically going to own the right of way, from right of way to right of way. So I'm hoping we can do something as simple as just give them an exhibit of the right of way and highlight it and say, everything within here.
Or potentially recognizing that the surveys that were obtained or provided have the catch basins and the inlets on there, and they are, they have milars and reproducible also.
I don't think they surveyed all the old stuff, I think they just surveyed the new stuff.
I think they did all of them.
Well, either way.
If they would take an exhibit, it would shores, they could make it a lot easier.
Differentiation.
Yes.
Yeah, and that, I mean, not to get too detailed, but it's going to be further complicated because it's not one permit that we're going to be transferring.
It's several.
Probably nine or ten that we're going to be partially transferring, so there'll be some paperwork to take care of that we'll be on top of as soon as those roads hopefully get conveyed.
Madam Chair, first.
Yes, sir.
Tyler, my recollection is that the last meeting, we asked that some representative from this elementary school that's going to be built come and tit chat with us. Do you know anything about that?
Yes, sir, I do. I believe that that representative is here.
Oh.
He is in the back of the room, he's that gentleman right there in the Columbia shirt.
Could be. You mean the stranger?
So, yeah, so Mr. Connolly is here representing that developer today. And I believe also that he met with members of staff, and I think also Supervisor Banks also, I think, last week or this week, to discuss. So I'm not sure if Chris was going to address that tonight, or if somebody else was, but I believe everyone came to a resolution. I wasn't at it, so I can't say for sure, but I think there's a resolution that we came to.
Yeah, I mean, basically, I met with Scott and one of the other representatives, and we went through the flow. They basically described what the, what the traffic flow would, would be like, provide a little more information on volume. The one thing that, that I did find out, that I don't think it was described in the, in the first meeting, was they will have an aftercare program, so they will be picking up kids that are above that preschool age and, and housing them in the facility. Again, it doesn't really alter much the, the flow patterns, or my concern from a traffic perspective. I think it's something we're just going to have to monitor. And again, as the, as the roads get turned over, then it becomes maybe an opportunity down the road for, you know, a light somewhere, or, you know, whatever. But, you know, I was, I was fine with the outcome of the meeting, so I didn't have any additional questions.
Anybody else have anything?
No, thanks. Is this going to be fenced? Do you know if there's going to be a fence around it? I'm worried about kids running across to seven eleven, that they.
These are preschool.
I'm trying to remember the plan, maybe.
There's more worry.
Don't be worried about that, are you?
I'm just concerned that kids are really fast, no matter how many people we have watching, believe me.
I'm trying to recall the plans right now, and maybe Scott knows the answer. I want to say there is a, I know there's landscape buffer, I want to say there is a fence, is there?
I think everything's contained.
Isn't there a fence on it?
Is there one?
There's a fence around it, isn't it?
Yes.
Oh, good, okay. So, I won't have that, that was my concern.
The one issue that we talked about was the retention pond, is the retention pond still in?
Yes.
Still in?
Yes, sir. So, yeah, the rest of the stuff we'll, I guess, cover under the business items, but outside of those, I believe that is all I have for you at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Tony, I just want to bring this to your attention, in that on the front page of your memo, it says February twenty-fourth meeting of the VOCC.
Twenty-first.
And I was going to say.
Thank you for that.
That needs to be twenty-first.
Thank you. Another errata sheet, huh?
Just wanted to make that correction.
I appreciate that, thank you.
All right. Business managers' report.
April White, your business manager, I apologize for not having my report on the agenda, and I only have one update prepared, and that is the website launch has been delayed yet again, and it will probably be next Friday. We are struggling, there's, there's some technical issues that the programmer is still trying to revamp. Some of the, the most difficult part of the website is the meetings and housing the meetings out there, because we want to actually have the current meeting, the current agenda, so, so it's kind of a complex page that we're kind of trying to build for each of the committees and the supervisors. And then staff, we are currently putting on content, and we're hoping that everything comes together with a final review, so we can launch by next Friday. So hopefully sometime next week, we'll be distributing the website connection, so you can log on and actually look at it. But we wanted to have it in a better position than it is right now, before we actually give it to you to review. Okay?
Thank you.
Any questions, May? Okay.
Doesn't look like it. Thank you, April. District manager.
I have nothing under this section.
Okay. Utility manager.
Hello, Chris Schumaker, and I just have a couple items. Due to length of the agenda under utility side, we have some new programs starting up on valve exercising, we've received bids for reconstruction of the pump stations, it's moving along. And also, for our open positions that we've advertised for utility manager, and also public works manager, we received over a hundred resumes. And I'd have to say about ninety-five percent of them weren't qualified for the job. If we need a pawn shop manager. Pawn shop manager, or an artist, we're in good shape, though. But we are going to interview next week, we have three, four viable resumes for utility manager, and we're going to be re-advertising and changing the job description around for the public works.
So you really didn't get anybody that you thought would do public works?
No, and we're looking for some strong budget and project management skills, and we just did not find that on paper, even enough to look at someone to think, you know, we'll bring them in and see if we can dig something out, so.
Chris, is there, just, do you have any other viable alternatives that, that you want to share at this time, or you're?
Well, we're going to, we're going to just add, we've covered with our advertisements, really the places professionals go to look, Florida Water Pollution Control Operators, the AWWA, the WEF, we're going to add the LinkedIn, and there's also a couple of VOTEC and education programs in St. Petersburg and Lake City that have graduates and people that work there, so we're adding them to the list. And we've also been beating the bushes, calling the engineering firms and contacts we have, and, you know, getting the word on the street that way. And I know it's taken a little bit of time, but you do a bad hire, and it could take you a year to get out of it, and we just don't have that kind of room, so we're taking our time.
We don't need to be doing training, we haven't got time.
And I'll go ahead and stay up for item A, if you'd like to start on the business agenda.
Go right ahead.
And basically, this is just a notice to the board, there's a landscape maintenance contract with Mainscape that's been underway for several years, and basically has one more year coming up in March as an auto renewal clause, and that'll be the last year of that. And there were, there were two things that weren't addressed in their contract, that I was going to do an amendment to the contract when we renew it, and both of them have very little fiscal impact. One was the use of the property in the back of the building that they've, they've been using, and they want to continue to use it on a limited basis, but it's never been addressed, there's no rent or fees charged for it, or their vehicles. And also, water, they've traditionally gotten their water for free, they just fill up at some of our locations are out front, and I told them that I was going to be installing a meter and putting a drop in where they could get their water, and I said, I'm not trying to penalize you because the amount of water you're using at twenty-three cents a thousand isn't a big fiscal impact, but I need to account for the water. Because when we're putting together figures that we're working on now, gallons pumped, gallons sold, and that holes between them, that's one of those holes we want to fill. Where's the water going? And also, when we go to renew the contract, or go out to RFP, we can address the issue of paying for the water and staging areas in that, in the new RFP.
And you put, I didn't necessarily see, but there are terms and conditions as far as our, our facility use, storage, what can be stored?
Well, there aren't, and it's just been when they started, and they've had such a long term, it's like, hey, you can put your stuff back there and get your water over there.
But that's what you're addressing, when you're, you're laying out terms and conditions and.
Correct, what it can be used for, and then it'll terminate at the end of their agreement, being terminated. And if there's anything else the board has any concerns about, or would like me to address in the amendment, I'd be happy to add that, but it's just going to be a short page, page and a half, and.
Bill?
Chris, two years ago, when we awarded the contract to Mainscape.
Yes, sir.
The contract that we awarded was not the lowest bid. And some of our committee folks urged us to continue with Mainscape because they knew the property, and they knew where the sprinkler heads were, and they knew this, they knew that.
Right.
That can have a chilling effect upon folks that you want to get a bid for at, at next year's time, when you're out for bid. So if you're, if you have any thoughts at all about not continuing with Mainscape for whatever reason, you've got to make it perfectly clear to your bidders that this is not a locked-up, done deal with Mainscape.
Right. And, and we also have the main irrigation lines, a map of them on the boulevard, and we're locating more of those facilities. But it would probably be remiss on our part if we didn't go out to bid next year and get responses for the board.
That's a huge number.
It is.
It is a huge number. And if you put in the add-ons they, they get by being here, some of those things that aren't covered in the contract, you know, adds a considerable amount to that overall cost.
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you, Chris. Proposed new Pelican Preserve CDD system and facility operations and maintenance agreement.
The, the heading is almost as long as the document itself. Hopefully, the memorandum was self-explanatory, and I really appreciate the work of Mr. Gregor, John Shepherd along, he did about ninety percent of the work and, and, you know, getting all the, herding the cats, so to speak, and making sure we had the good spreadsheet. Sarah did ninety percent of it, the other ninety percent, so there's a hundred and eighty percent involved, those two. And it was a good, we had some good sessions to talk about the issues, to understand the needs of each, each party, and understand where there might have been some issues and gaps in the, in the operational aspect of the other agreement. So I think it was also a good learning experience by both sides on this, and I think we ended up with a much better product from what we all learned about. And it is recommended for approval, and I don't know if there are any questions from the board.
I, I had a couple.
Okay.
So I'll just start and then turn it over to my fellow board members. WCI has now been, the purchase by Lennar has been finalized, so does the agreement need to reflect that this is Lennar and not WCI?
Well, the entity is actually the community association, but it's a good point to make with regards to WCI, there is one reference, well, we took out the reference to the prior bankruptcy because it was no longer pertinent, and I don't know if WCI even appears in the agreement at all anymore as a, in the agreement, I don't think it does, I think we took all references out. So I don't think it has any impact per se, from the standpoint of having them named.
It's an assignment, isn't it?
Well, once again, this is the master association, it's, and it's a.
But I mean, anything that was associated with WCI and their responsibilities would be an assignment.
Well, and they were not part of this agreement, the only reference to them was because of the prior bankruptcy, various issues were raised by the public reserve community about how assessments would be utilized, that's my recollection, and that language has been removed, is no longer pertinent. I think we referenced that at page, I don't know if you can bear with me, of paragraph two of my memorandum. The prior reference to the WCI bankruptcy was deleted and is no longer relevant to the, this agreement. So I don't think we need to make any changes because of that.
And I, I realize this is with the Pelican Preserve Community Association, like their master association, but you have not turned over, isn't that right, Billy? So basically, it's Lennar, WCI.
Controls the association, that's correct. They're not a signatory to this, because this is a separate entity, but to the extent under their covenants that the prime developer, WCI. WCI, Lennar, whatever they're calling themselves nowadays, to the extent they control the association.
I don't know how you get around that.
Yeah, and once again...
I just wanted to make sure that if there was any clarification that needed to be made.
The only point, what we may need to do, in paragraph eleven D at the bottom of page five, do we know what the name of it, is it still WCI Communities, or is it a subsidiary of Lennar? We'll need to clarify that, may need to change that, because paragraph eleven D states that, however, during the term of this maintenance agreement and prior to turnover of control of the association to the property owners other than the current prime developer, i.e. WCI Communities, L C WCI, or another entity as a prime developer. So, I mean, I think it may already be covered, because we say, "or another entity." They've got the option to terminate it.
That was really my only question. You answered the other one that I had, so Kathy, did you have any questions?
I have no questions.
No, my information is that Lennar is going to have WCI continue as a wholly unsub, and the W F I name will still be prominent in all of the workings.
Okay, and I'll follow up with their attorneys on that. That's a good point. Thank you.
I'm good.
Are you looking for a motion for approval?
Yes, yes, we are. And again, I wanna thank John and Sarah, and Chris Davies, and John.
We have to thank you.
No, you guys, no, you guys are great.
Well, let's just all thank you.
That's a goodbye-ah moment, yes. Authorized to have the board approve the agreement, authorize the chairman to sign.
I'll make approval.
I'll second.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion period.
Thank you very much. The next item is an item that was moved along faster than the operations agreement, as far as getting it achieved. And this is a, again, hopefully the memorandum was self-explanatory with how we got where we are today. To, the proposal is, and it's recommended, that the board authorize the chairman to execute, and the board approve, the traffic control jurisdiction agreement with the city of Fort Myers over the district roads in Pelican Reserve. And Phil Measy led this issue, headed this up, and Grant Alley from the city attorney's office has shepherded this along. And it's recommended for approval, and after this point in time, if it's approved by the city council, and hopefully before March thirty-first, then the city police department will have the ability to engage in traffic law enforcement on the district roads in Pelican Reserve. The one additional item that came up between some of the other prior districts in this agreement was the city is starting to realize, indicating Grant Alley's memorandum or email and in the memorandum, that it's starting to, they believe that it's starting to affect the capacity, the law enforcement ability, to do this for no additional cost. So, they may, in the future, notify various districts that they will be charging for these services, and then the districts have the choice to opt out of the agreement or stay in it and pay. And Grant was kind enough to say that about four times in his email to make sure...
Just super clear.
I read it, I was of the same mindset, you know.
Crystal.
Yeah, crystal clear. And he was kind enough also to send the draft green sheet. The other county uses blue sheets, they use green sheets. I'm not sure what sheet April we're gonna be using down the road.
Green sheet.
Light green or dark green?
Yeah, it is green.
Well, I was thinking about the website, but I'm not gonna say.
But again, I appreciate the work of the Pelican Reserve Advisory Committee, the Safety and Security Work Group, and Mr. Measy, and this is recommended for approval.
And I had one question on this one. The traffic control, is that merely speeding and stop sign enforcement?
All the traffic laws of the state of Florida, they would have the ability to enforce.
Including parking?
If it's a violation of a state statute, and it violates, like obstructing a road, they would have the ability to issue citations for that.
Okay, that was, I just wanted to know.
And recognizing that they have the discretion to issue or not to issue. And they will always tell you that, they have the discretion, you can make suggestions as to how you wish them to enforce the statutes, but they will always tell you, they are the ultimate determiner.
Any other questions? This end, right? Looking for a motion?
Sub move.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much. And again, I wanna thank the Pelican Reserve Advisory Committee for this, and Phil Measy.
That brings us to the S D contract.
Hey, Stephen, can you reach behind you and give us one degree of warmth there?
Okay, I think we're good. We've got everything reviewed on the revisions. I summarized some of the amendments for you on the summary sheet, and I believe Mr. Concar and Tony had spoke prior to the meeting, and you were going to make a specific motion.
Well, Mr. Concar mentioned that, as I understand him, that his counsel hasn't completely reviewed it yet, and there may be some suggested revisions after their attorneys look at it. And so, if the board is to approve the agreement today, approve it in substantially final form, subject to any minor revisions that may occur after counsel for S T's review. And in my opinion, if I think it's substantial, I will make sure I let April and Chris and the board know, so it would have to come back to the board.
Okay.
If that's okay with you.
Right, so the motion would be contingent on legal review, and did we wanna specifically call out the change in the scope?
I think Bob mentioned where it is. If you could correct that.
For the record, we're probably...
Okay, Dan, paragraph four point five?
Yeah, just that four point five is there.
Okay, so, basically, I think what we wanna call out is, basically, the transactions that we provided to the contract after Mr. Concar provided it to us. And Mrs. Feinberg and I got together, and we reviewed it, and so we basically changed the word manager to administrator. And then in paragraph four point five, because in the event, I know there's been discussion collectively between us, that we may ultimately prepare an RFP and go out to bid. And so, we had a discussion, Stephen and I, as far as the audit transition and budget, so, and with Mrs. Feinberg, as far as when you wanted to transition this agreement. So, this agreement is set to expire three thirty-one, so we're extending it for another year, because we wanna be sure that we're kind of in between, if there was a transition, in the event of a transition, that we're kinda in between the audit and the budget cycle. So, one of the things that I wanted to be sure that we were all on the same page is we added four point five, and that says, "Upon the termination of the agreement, the administrator will assure that the two thousand and seventeen audit is substantially complete as to field work, and will take all reasonable and necessary actions to cooperate with the completion of the district's two thousand and seventeen audit, even beyond the term of this agreement, without additional cost to the district." So, the contract estimate as far as the cost anticipates, you know, staff has anticipated the hours and the time necessary to complete that audit. So, even in the event that extends beyond the term of this agreement, I wanted to be sure that that was addressed. Also, in the scope, with the changes that we changed to the scope was on page thirteen. If you look towards the middle of the page, you'll see the words coordinate tax collection and miscellaneous receivables. So, right under there, we added several things. Excuse me?
What's the item?
It's on, I'm sorry. What's the item number? It's in the scope. I'm sorry, it's on the agenda, page seventy-nine.
Thank you.
Sorry. So, it's just the list of bullets.
Gotcha.
So, towards the middle of the page is coordinate tax collection and miscellaneous receivables. So, that was standard in there, but we added several things after that. And that was provide up-to-date information on actual to, budget to actual expenditures and revenue information, provide up-to-date information on the balance sheet for the district, coordinate annual audit with the business manager as an audit contact, coordinate provide all related documentation to outsource payroll. We are interested, and we would like to outsource payroll, because there's certain, it has become very economical because of technology, to outsource payroll. And now, they have these portals for employees that would actually provide them, you know, their W four information, their W two information, their accrued leave balances, and it would also help me, as far as approving time off, to be able to instantaneously see those balances. So, that's specifically what we're looking for, but also, just kind of looking ahead, that in the event, that down the road, we do an RFP, and we end up transitioning with our accounting function, it would make payroll seamless. We would already be on, we wouldn't have to address payroll issues at that time. And so, those are the objectives that we're trying to obtain, and we wanted to make sure that we had something in here, because that's gonna be, you know, a burden on the accounting staff at S T to provide those reports that are needed to get us outsourced.
Couple questions?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I looked at it, just one for, I think, a clerical thing, is that I think it should be corrected. I think we're Gateway Services Community Development District, instead of Gateway Community Development District, just for the name. And then the other one is, I went through the last contract, Exhibit B, and just kinda highlighted those things that were staying, and those things that were going, and everything looked like, notwithstanding the ones that were we batted because of a name change or a position or operations manager. The two that I found that I thought we were taking care of, but it looks like they're staying, and correct me if I'm wrong, record and transcribe all meetings, board supervisors, including meeting, special meetings, workshops, and public hearings, and then the next one below that, the recording detailed description, transcription, edit for grammar in a manner, da-da-da-da-da. I thought that we were going to do those ourselves.
No, quite the opposite. We're transferring that responsibility to S T, so we can have some consistency in our minutes. And so, actually, S T staff will be preparing the minutes in a summary form for the board and the two committees.
Completely. So, Diane will not be responsible at all anymore?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so, okay, well, that, thanks, that's where I was going. So, that clarifies that. That's all I had. Everything looked real good.
Okay, and then just also, back to the changes that we made to the scope, all payments and invoices shall be approved by the business manager prior to processing. Late fees due to administrator's delay shall be reimbursed by the administrator, and proof of reimbursement provided to the business manager. And then provide the weekly check registers, and that's gonna be to the business manager.
The other one is amendments one and two eliminated by this, then? Amendments one and two to the original agreement have been eliminated by this?
I'm gonna defer that to Tony. There was some conversation.
Yes, if I could, after the board, pardon me to raise it now. My concept in reviewing it, it's treated as a Fourth Amendment, but it's not titled as such, and so I did a complete rewrite to make it a Fourth Amendment, because there were some provisions in there that I'm not comfortable with, from a standpoint of indemnification, hold harmless, limitations on damages, insurance. And as crafted, as it stands now, it's like a standalone agreement. It doesn't technically terminate the existing agreement.
That's my point.
And what I, I don't wanna complicate anything, but I, what I would propose is a Fourth Amendment, and again, there are a number of substantives, and a number of, I'll call it minor changes, to track that there was a, this is a Fourth Amendment, and then it does terminate the existing agreement in its entirety as amended, and then takes all this, that's, basically, it's in the body of what you see with some other changes, and makes that the current agreement.
I thought the Third Amendment was on hold, that this would be the Third Amendment. This is the Third Amendment that I have, and I don't think we ever, we never got to that, did we?
Now, the Third Amendment has been approved.
Yeah.
Has been. Is that this right here?
That's reviewing, that's removing me.
That's changing that typo on the dollar deal.
And also with Molly.
And also Molly's services.
And Molly through January nineteenth is corrected.
Okay.
But, and I don't know if that had an opportunity to be circulated to the board, the draft Fourth Amendment in the redlined format. I don't know.
No, what we have looks like a new agreement.
Yeah, correct. Well, you have this titled an agreement as opposed to a Fourth Amendment.
I see what you're saying. I would agree.
And again, the scope of services was, I did not have any issue with that, but some of the body of the text itself was some items of concern that I had, to change the liability coverage, for example, some of the insurance coverage requirements. And so, I don't know if it's appropriate, Madam Chairman, to take a brief recess, we can run copies off the board, can review these, and...
If you're gonna have, if you're gonna do it as a Fourth Amendment, then there's gotta be, and I'm assuming you've got it in there somewhere, a whereas that explains, because there is some substantial changing of the wording and duties in there, so something's gotta be in that, and I see you all got all the lines, so I'm guessing you got it covered.
Yes, basically, what I took was that, you know, by virtue of basically deleting the entire agreement, paragraphs one through twenty-four as it exists as amended, and substituting, basically, this body as amended. That takes care of the change from manager to administrator and everything else.
Bob, you seen that?
You mean this agreement?
The Fourth Amendment.
The amendment that he's talking about?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And that's what's under your legal review now?
Correct. Okay, okay. I guess all we need to do is see a couple.
Yeah, so I think that's what we, I mean, if we wanna, if, can we make, Tony, can we make a motion to approve a contingent upon legal review and providing...
Well, I'm comfortable with what I drafted.
Let's take a five-minute break.
Okay.
I'm talking about your subject to review by S T of not being substantial changes. I couldn't resist it, but I...
Yeah, as I said, glad to hear that.
And Tony, did you put it as Gateway Services?
Yes, and also on the, it was also changed...